All right, it is six o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands our nation in thy eye into this whole world.
All right, recognitions. I've got one, too.
Okay.
You want to go first? I'll go first. I would like to recognize Matt Grant. Next week is the election. Matt's not running for reelection. Apparently, he's got, you know, a bunch of other things going on, so.
Family.
But I want to thank Matt for the work he's done this time here on the school committee. And, you know, he worked with me on quite a number of things over the last couple of years. So, thank you, Matt, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Welcome back. It's Monday after vacation, so I think I speak for Dr. Esposito, Ms. Priest. We're all a little bit, we're all dragging a little bit today, but it was a good day back. Prior to vacation, we had some events at both schools. I just want to recognize some people, get some shout-outs. The first is Mr. Mike Shelburne, first-grade teacher at elementary school who organized the Earth Day event at the elementary school, which has been going on for several years. And Mike does a fantastic job of bringing in both staff within the building plus outside parents. I think, Mr. Cannon, you were there, you were involved, so.
It was a fun day. It was very warm up.
It was very hot. It was very hot. So, a lot of outdoor events that were very hot, indoor events that were fun. But it's been a success, and I know Ms. Priest will probably speak to it again later on this evening. I want to thank Ms. Malone, who, with student council, organized our lip sync event, which, again, was also the Friday before vacation. It's a tradition here at the high school. It's been going on for several years, and I know Ms. Priest brought the sixth grade up to watch as well. So, it was a very well-attended event, and it's a nice way to kind of end our week prior to vacation, the last hour or so of school. I want to send a big congratulations to Jake Sandrovich, who, again, I think Olivia probably mentioned this later tonight, but Jake sent an email out about a week and a half ago to the staff here at the high school. He was giving a speech. He was running for Secretary of Central Mass for student council. So, we all gathered in the Kiva. Jake gave a speech, excellent speech, gave him some feedback. Well, the next day, Jake gave that speech to pretty much all the student council members across Central Mass, and Jake won. So, congratulations to Jake. He has been one of the biggest leaders in this school for the past couple of years, and this is just only going to break more positive press to no avail. So, congratulations to Jake, congratulations to student council, and to Ms. Malone for doing a fantastic job. And that's it for recognitions right now.
I also did see Mrs. Hanson out in the hallway there.
Yes.
Tomorrow's a big, tomorrow's departure day for Washington DC.
It is.
So, that's a shout-out to everyone that got that done. That was a, that was a big undertaking that she does every year.
Yeah, they ship out tomorrow at 5:30, I believe. So, you'll have a solid weekend in DC, and very happy for the students and for the chaperones.
Anyone else have any recognitions for this week? All right, next one. We'd like to see this, donations.
So, some donations. I just wanted to highlight, the first is from Shutterfly or Lifetouch. This is the company that we use for photography, school photos. So, based on our contract language, we get a kind of a kickback, if you will, from the company. This year was just slightly over $200. So, that was the first item for acceptance, I believe, for the committee to accept.
Yeah, if you want, we can just read the.
Okay, all right. The second is reading for education, and this is also a little over $1,300, which is given back to the elementary school. And then, lastly, we have a gentleman, Mr. Sean Smith. It's actually Dr. Esposito's husband. His company is in the process of getting all the furniture and computer monitors. So, he'd like to make a donation to the school district, six monitors and over nine rolling chairs. So, we'd like to accept that donation as well.
Motion to accept the donations. You have a second?
Second one.
All in favor of accepting the donations?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you to Dr. Esposito's husband for donating that as well. Approval of minutes. So, the minutes we are approving, just so we can get it right, is Monday, March 20th, 2023. Held right here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
So.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these? All right, all in favor of approving the March 20th meeting minutes?
Aye.
Great. Possibly my favorite part of every meeting, our student representative report.
Yeah, I've got quite a lot. We've had a lot going on, and we have a lot more coming up. We had our spring conference on Thursday, April 13th. Student council members attended our central district spring conference at West Boson High School. At this event, members spent time. We campaigned for Jake's candidacy as secretary, and we listened to all of the candidate speeches, then attended a workshop. After our workshop, as a council, we voted for the new regional executive board positions. And as McCormick already mentioned, we are very proud to announce that Jake won the election for CDMAS secretary over, he had seven opponents running against him, which is incredible. He does an amazing job, and I'm so proud and can't wait to see what he does next year. Before April vacation, we had our annual spirit week and lip sync competition. We had a week full of fun spirit days. Monday was dress-up versus dress-down day. Tuesday was Disney versus Marvel day. Wednesday was dynamic duo day. Thursday was country club, and Friday was class color day. Friday was also the day of lip sync. All the classes worked very hard to make their performances as special as possible. They all did an amazing job, but in the end, the class of 2024 stole the top spot, winning for the second year in a row. As well as repairing the lip sync, each class was also asked to make a banner to match their lip sync theme. These were then judged, as well as the performances, and the class of 2024 also came in strong and yet another win. I would like to take a minute to thank all of the class advisors, as well as our four judges, Mr. Cannon, Ms. Rachel, Mr. Saret, and Ms. Cap. They were a big help in making that day a success. And I would also just like to shout out our chairs, Mara McEachy and Peyton Cantwell, for all their hard work planning this event. And then, for upcoming information, we have our teacher appreciation week. This year, our teacher appreciation week is going to be from May 8th to May 12th. This will be a week-long event where we spend time appreciating all the things that our teachers, staff, and administration do for our school and our council, and showing them just how much we care. Our junior conference is going to be on May 16th. We will be, we will be hosting our annual junior conference for the sixth graders. We are going to be running workshops, doing energizers, and teaching them all about how student council runs. This is a great opportunity for the sixth graders to get a taste of the way student council runs and runs our events, and how larger-scale student council events are run. We try to keep our junior conference schedule kind of like how our conferences that we attend run. So, we do a workshop, and we give them time to eat lunch, but we do school tours and energizers, and kind of try to keep that fun energy up while still teaching them that student council is something they might be interested in, and just how much hard work it takes. We also have our step-up days. For the first time this year, student council has been asked to help out with the sixth grade step-up days as well. We will be sending some to eighth-grade representatives to help out Dr. Gould in the guidance department with these days. And then, for class and student council elections, in May, we'll be holding elections for student council executive board, as well as for seven through 12 class officers for the 2023-2024 school year. The paperwork has already been posted in folders around the school and is available to anyone who's interested. And the sixth grade elections will be held in the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year. We have our softball concessions continuing. Our softball concessions are being run by Jake Sandrovich and Shannon Toomey, and will be set up outside of all home softball games. Kind of like our basketball concessions were run, but they will be outside the softball field. And then, as you all probably know, we invite all our community members to follow our social media accounts to keep up with the student council activities and events. Our accounts are for Instagram and Facebook. They are @NBSTUCO. And for our student council meetings, they're always open to the community. Meetings are typically every other Monday in the high school Kiva. And we really would encourage you to join us if you have anything you would like to discuss or just want to see how our meetings are run, anything like that. But always feel welcome to come stop in.
Thank you, Olivia. It's not like you guys are winding down at the end of the school year.
Nope. The end of the school year and the beginning of the school year is where things get crazy.
Olivia, just one question, and I, and I personally answer this. How many students in total are involved with student council?
Oh, I don't know exactly.
Not to put you on the spot, or.
Our numbers have definitely dwindled in the past couple of years. I know when I started, we had a lot of members, but we've definitely got some good engagement. We've got probably maybe 15 to 20, not including our e-board.
So, that's between 25 and 30 total?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds about right.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just.
No, you're good.
Just curious what the total number was. Thank you.
I can get you a roster if you want to know everyone who's involved.
You don't have to. I just was, because I know the number is, it's outside of the e-board. So, I was just curious how many students outside the e-board are involved. Thank you.
So, for all the students watching at home, student council would like you to volunteer.
Hundreds.
And good job. You always got to plug the social media at the end.
Right? Well, that's where we do most of our advertising for our events. So, we like people to know that it's not just for our council's use. It's for everyone to know what is going on and where we advertise all our community events.
Thank you again. Anyone else have any questions for Olivia?
Oh, I'd like to ask a question. What kind of things do you have planned for the student, the teacher appreciation week?
So, for teacher appreciation week, we usually do fun announcements, just like each day we'll dedicate to a specific group of staff or teachers. Like, one day will be for the janitors, or another day will be for the lunch staff. And then, we do little gifts for all the teachers and staff each day. And at the end of the week, we usually plan a breakfast for the teachers.
And what year are you in?
I'm a junior.
Okay.
We also do, we give superlatives to each teacher. And we do like an award ceremony for them at the end of the week and give them their superlatives, which they always get a laugh out of, because we use like our inside jokes with each teachers to come up with the ideas.
Excellent.
Anything else? Well, good luck with, good luck with that busy couple of weeks coming up with.
Thank you.
All right. School committee reports. Do we have any school committee reports?
Okay.
Okay. Financial reports.
Can I interject just for a second? I don't see anywhere on here where we have any agenda items for any communications to come to the committee. Do we have any communications that we directed to the committee that we should be? I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
I just noticed that, because like.
I brought them up previously in the school committee reports.
Well, that's why I asked. That's why I asked, right. So, that's why I'm asking the question, so. Okay.
So, maybe we could just put the school committee reports slash correspondent.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, we have too many school committee reports.
No, we don't. Honestly, don't get that many communications either, but I just, I was looking back. My apologies for the explanation, but I was looking back at a previous Bay Path agenda, and they had a communication section, and I remember those, you know, where they read stuff that came specifically to the committee, and I just, I would say.
Yeah, Mike definitely had that.
That's cool. Thank you.
Financial reports. So, we have a new form here that Mr. McCormick can kind of go.
Yeah, so, again, it's still, there's two parts, and I inadvertently did not put in the signed warrants in the packet, so that's why you have additional copy tonight in front of you. There's only five copies, so this one, this one, there's two of those. That's pretty standard. The second part is a new kind of sheet that we're working on. It's, I think it's open to feedback, but it gives you an idea of where our FY23 line items stand, year-to-date, and also projections for the remainder of the year. We also added another section, which I have produced into this evening, the transfers that we are asking to do within the budget, based on some of the line items that may be in the red as of right now. So, there's one, two, three, seven transfers that are listed at the bottom of the third page for your review.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the report and the transfers?
Second.
So, Mr. McCormick, could you just walk us through the transfers for the viewing public so that they're.
Sure, sure. So, we just, the first three are general to general, and they were just, we were drawing down the line items at one point. So, we had to move some contracted, contracted psych money over to school psych for both the high school and elementary, then news and membership to office equipment. And then, the last three are some of our transportation line items, which we transferred, we are now going to be using the school choice and certain brighter funds to pay those line items down. So, just making those, those movements within the budget to make sure everything balances.
So, I was actually looking for a little more specific, solid, the details I was looking for. I'm looking for $9,412.50 from contracted, was that fiscal?
Psych.
Oh, psych.
Yeah.
High, yeah, high school to school psych high school. From the general fund to the general fund. $9,412.50 from contracted psych elementary school to the school psych elementary school, general fund to general fund. $1,550.50 from dues and members high school office to office equipment high school, general fund to general fund. And $1,550.50 from dues and member elementary school to office equipment elementary school, general to general fund. Then, we're looking at $36,856.22 from regional, regular ed transportation high school to school choice, general to general. Uh, sorry, general to grant, I'm sorry. And then, $26,326.28 from regular ed transportation elementary school to school choice, general to grant. And then, $19,036.50 from homeless transportation high school to circuit breaker, general to grant. I don't really think that's important, because we talk about the budget from the public, and so, as we talked about, I think that's important for people to understand. So, so I understand that the money from the grant, I'm sorry, money back to the grant is money that should have been expended from the grant, right?
Right.
And was not, and so, now we're just doing bookkeeping for those three.
Right.
I would like to understand why the first four are exactly the same dollar figure. 94, 12, 50, 94, 12, 50, 15, 50, I'm sorry, 1,550.50, 1,550.50 from contracted services dues and members into office equipment and, and school psych high school and elementary school. It just seems weird to me that they're exactly the same dollar figure.
That's where it transferred. The, if you look at the accounts year-to-date, those numbers are different. But we'll transfer that amount right now to offset those, those line items, if that makes sense.
So, I guess I'm just asking, where did that number come from?
Um, I don't know exactly where that exact, that exact number came from. That's a number that when Cindy and I discussed, it's a little bit.
Okay. So, you expect that we'll see further transfers going forward?
Yeah.
With regard to those four account lines?
Um, these and maybe some others as well.
Okay. This is a, this is something that's been near and dear to Ron's. He's been pushing for this for a while, so we're, Mr. McCormick and Cindy have worked real hard to put this together. This will prevent like a year-end kind of mega transferring and bookkeeping to zero things out. So, by doing it month to month, it'll keep everything a lot more regular. And it'll make it easier. We don't have to, we don't have to review a whole mess of transfers at the end of the year. Does this portion address the questions that Ron had, was it previous meeting, about line items that were kind of strange? Does this clear that up, or is this separate from that?
John, so, good question. This does not talk about payroll. So, there's some, if I may, there's some issues still with the payroll, and so, there's some question about that still. But this was all the items, if I'm correct, that are not, that are not affiliated with payroll.
Am I correct?
Yeah, I think payroll, just so people know, it's, people are getting paid. I think what's happened is we're still rolling over those amounts into our version of iVisions, which is here at the school district. So, that is something that Cindy is working on that's fairly labor-intensive. So, this is, these are, you're correct in saying, these are just the non-salary line items that we're showing you, just in this part of the document.
If I could answer Ron's question about the school psych, the, in the line items above, that position is split 50-50 between the two schools. It's a shared position, which is why it's the same amount. It's under school psychologist 50% LM, 50% school psychologist 50% high school, and there's the, it's the same amount. I think it's because it's just split between the two buildings' budgets.
Perfect, thank you. And that may be the same answer for the other.
Yeah, I couldn't find that one as I was looking, but I'm assuming maybe it's the same.
Yep.
Same reason.
Tim?
Yes.
Canada? I just wanted to ask a question. Um, I haven't checked the, I don't know what we'd ask, I guess. I haven't checked school spring in a while. Are we still looking for a school psychologist instead of contracted?
We have one that's contracted, yeah.
But are we looking one for the district? We used to have one for the district.
No, no, we're not looking currently, no. We have, right now, we have, I think, two positions that I know we have. One in the elementary school, I mean, two in the elementary school right now that we're still not built. Am I correct with that, Ms. Priest?
I believe three, because we just haven't paired them up.
Okay, so, so, yeah.
Any other discussion about the financial reports? All right, so we have a motion to approve this report and the transfers. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye? All right. So, next, we have the draft of the school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year.
Um, so, you have a draft version of next school year. Just to highlight some of the major changes, and there aren't many. When we negotiated contracts last June, we went from four to three full-day PD days. So, you'll see those three PD days that are in the, the calendar now. And we still have the four and a half days. We would start school for teachers on the 28th and 29th, the first two opening school PD days. Students come back on the 30th. And then, without snow days, our last day of the school year would be June 12th. And with the five snow days, we would be pushed out to June 20th. And the last day of the school year is a half-day.
Make motion to approve the school calendar. Second that? Any discussion on the school calendar? Friday's early next year.
I think it's in March.
March 29th.
Yeah.
All in favor of approving the school calendar for the 2023-2024 school year?
Aye.
Aye? Yes? All right.
Mr. McCormick?
Yes.
When's the last day of this year?
21st.
Okay.
That's a half-day.
All right. Next topic for discussion, our appropriate public schools' school resource officer. I'm going to turn this one to Matt. This is something you mentioned you wanted to put on the agenda, so do you want to?
Yeah, so, I was just looking at, I know I had asked Mr. McCormick about it previously in a meeting, you know, his thoughts on it. You know, with more events happening in the news, I just think it's something that we should seriously, personally, I mean, that we should seriously consider for the safety of our children. I mean, that's one of our key philosophies, is making a safe environment for our kids to learn in. And I think with things going on nowadays, I think this is something we should definitely look into, is having a resource officer in each building. And/or looking at security as a whole. I mean, if we decide that school resource officer is not the way, the trend, the way trends are going, I think we do need to look at school security as a whole. I mean, I know that, you know, we do the drills, we do everything, but, you know, one of my concerns would be like the high school, for example. I don't know during the school day, I never come to the high school during the school day, but when someone buzzes in, is there somebody that meets them there and lets somebody in? I don't know the whole process, so I don't know if you could walk us through this current security process? I just kind of want to have an overall discussion with us as a group, so, I don't know if we make a, if I need to make a motion first for us to do that?
We're not voting.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It's meant to be a little bit more.
Okay.
So, a couple, a couple of things there. I have talked to Shee Smith about pursuing or looking into a grant for an SRO, which would be shared between the two schools. So, he is, is reapplying for that. He's applied for in the past unsuccessfully. Typically goes to larger school districts for various reasons, sometimes obvious reasons, but doesn't mean we cannot actually get that grant.
Yeah.
But that's one avenue. And I think, you know, with the size of our district and the location of the two schools, I think a shared SRO would be, would be, I think would be workable for the district. I do, I do want to say out loud, I think I want to, I just want to give a lot of appreciation to our police department. I think they do a great job working with our staff, our students. We've had some analysis training this year for staff, for high school and middle school students, and the elementary's coming up within the next week. So, that has been something that I think has been well-received. They've been real drills, real conversations, as opposed to just a presentation. So, our staff and our students have been appreciative of that. And I think that Shee Smith takes it very seriously with his team, so I just want to give them the credit that's due. Regarding your question around if someone buzzed in the front door. There, there are cameras throughout both buildings. At the high school entrance, there's a camera that is right in front of the admin assistants' front desk. And she or he does not buzz that person in unless they either ask for that application, they can speak to that person, or they know that person and buzz them in. So, nobody can get in that front door without being buzzed in. I think that answers your question. You know, regarding overall school safety, I think it's something that we all think very seriously. And I think that we can't educate our kids unless our students and our staff feel safe. And I would be the first to admit that doing outstrokes doesn't solve all those worries. It's a start. I think that, you know, pursuing this grant is another option for us to look into. But I think that anytime we can educate our kids and our families on all kinds of school safety, not just necessary violence, but just, you know, interactions between their peers and the teachers, I think we could build a safer and stronger school community. So, I'm always open to for discussion around this topic, ideas. I know that I've talked to, I have new director of facilities and grounds, and we're also looking at making sure that our cameras are all working. And next steps would be looking at where are our blind spots? And I would be the first to say also that that's a very expensive endeavor, but it's something we need to look into as potentially a capital improvement project down the road, so.
Yeah, and would I, just to clear, I mean, I don't want to say I wasn't trying to take anything away from currently what's being done, or.
No.
Yeah, because I know that, just from speaking to. Yeah, because I know that, just from speaking to my children, I mean, they have a relationship with Chief Smith just because he's here so often at the beginning of the day, and I think that's great. I just think there's always room for improvement, and I think that I don't ever want to see us as a district being the ones that said, hey, that was too expensive, or hey, that was, you know, I don't want to ever have us say price game before safety, because I think it's very important that, you know, hey, even if we don't get this grant, I mean, I can speak from experience, we get the last town meeting when they were, the town was talking about getting improvements to the highway, barn, and fire station, they looked at it and said, well, it's only going to be a few hundred dollars a year on your tax bill for the next so many years. And if I do this for a police officer's salary, I mean, we're talking like $50 per taxpayer for a year. So I look at that as like, is nothing to do with school budget, is if we, and it is actually, I shouldn't say, there's nothing to do with school budget, but do we go to the town? Do we talk to the town and say, this is a safety issue, we have a police department in town? And do we look at, hey, this is only going to cost us $50 per taxpayer for, to keep our kids safe? And I know a school resource officer doesn't guarantee anything, but I think those willing to go out and commit violence, knowing that if a police officer's presence is either, even if it's shared, is here all the time, that changes the outlook of somebody going to commit that type of crime. And I just think we, to not do it because of money is, we'd all be kicking ourselves afterwards. So I just don't want to say that we were the ones that said, oh, we wanted to save that $50 per taxpayer, you know? That's just my two cents. I don't know if anybody else says any.
I think that one of the things that's nice about a town like this is that if you were to have a school resource officer, it would be someone, like Matt said, his daughters know Chief Smith because he's here. And that, that interaction between the police officer that you see here at school, and then, you know, you wave to when you're coming out of the gas station or whatever, I think that's an important thing, and there's a lot of conversation about school resource officers where they're just a dedicated police force in the school, and they're not, they don't have that level of, you know, interaction with the kids. And I think that's a big part of it is, if we're going to do it, I think we should do it right, and we should strive to have that, that communication between students and the resource officer, whoever's assigned to school, or have a rotating plan, you know, that's something that Chief Smith would have to work out. But I think that's an important component to it and not, not just having a person in a police uniform that comes into the school and doesn't know the kids and, you know, won't know, the more they know them, the more they can prevent potential problems. And I'm not talking like a major violent outburst, but just any sort of negative interaction between students or teachers or whatever. I think that's the advantage of the size of the town and the school, and it's something that if, as we look more at this, I think we need to keep that in our minds, that that's what we should strive for. That's my personal opinion.
I agree, I would represent.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, that where I've seen school resource officers, where it seems like the, that effort kind of drops is where you have like one officer to a very large school, and that interaction isn't as well dispersed among the entire school population. So I think having a school resource officer with a school this, with a district this size, a single officer be able to interact on a more personal basis with all the students as opposed to, you know, you know, we have a class of, you know, two, 300 kids, and then you've got a school with, you know, three, fourth grades in it, that, that interaction is very diluted. So I think here in this district, I think one, I think an officer would go a long way because there's that constant daily rapport that can be built. And again, like Tim was saying, it's not just about violence happening, the officer can be there as a mentor on, you know, plenty of issues that can be addressed, not just about violence or whatever, but just having that extra community support available, someone to listen to issues, you know? So I think it's very important that we have that presence.
I would like to ask, is there a way that we could do a bit of a checkup in terms of the security measures that are in place now? You say we have cameras. I know that your administrative office is open, the door is open. I know that the inside door is locked.
Right.
But there's access to the building and to get inside and to get to people.
There's access to me.
And Dr. Esposito, don't leave her. And Megan.
Oh, don't worry about Megan.
And that just makes me wonder about different scenarios that could be really scary. And the other thing is, there's no AC, and so doors can be left open to make the classrooms
Well, we, that's, you know, that is a, and I will say from time to time, I do encounter a door that's been opened, and that's an issue that I address immediately. That door they refer to between where my office is and the elementary school is shut at 8:15 or not, if not earlier, by one of us. And you can only be entered through that door unless you buzz in. But no, I, I fully recognize that some of our cameras could be updated, but it would have to, I would have to do a deep dive to where they're at and put together a full report. I don't want to just rattle off ideas without investigating a little further.
So I think what you're hearing from this committee, if I may, is that we are very concerned about it, and we would like a more thorough report on it based on all of the concerns. The concern about the doors being open, the concern about the door between your office and special ed office, you know, because I know I've come up there and.
I think Tim's concern was about the door enters into central office, correct? That there's no person there?
From the outside.
Is that what your concern was?
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the one between those two offices, right? Once you're inside, you're inside. So, so I think that there are a lot of areas that we probably tighten up. And so maybe it's, it would be good to either bring it to the next meeting or the meeting immediately after that, because, you know, we have May and then we have June, and then we're off for July, and we don't talk again a lot. So maybe in the next, and I don't know, I'm not, I have no idea what the schedule, I know May, June is very hectic for the school as a whole because of graduation and transfer students from one, you know, level to another. But if it's possible, it'd be, I'd like to see a report next month that says, these are our weaknesses, and these are the things that we think that we need to do to firm up. And if not in the May meeting, then I think I'd like to see that in June. And I can make that a motion if we need to, but I think that's just.
Just one question. Should we, before we stand here, public forum and announce the weaknesses?
No, 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 no.
Maybe just generalizations?
No, 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 I'm saying that that would probably be something that, we'll see if we can find a way to do that in executive session so we don't announce the weaknesses in public forum. But I just think that it'd be good to have a prepared document that says, these are the three weaknesses we have, or these are the 27 weaknesses we have, and we need to address them. Maybe we address them over time or whatever, but certainly if we don't have a plan, we can't manage to plan, right? So.
The resource officer is something that requires a lot more conversation, but if it's a camera thing or stuff like that, that's an easier way to at least shore things up.
Yeah, I will have to have a more conversation with Chief Smith, because I would want his expertise and his whole review.
And maybe he has access to like a checklist or something?
Yeah, I'm sure he does. I'm sure he does. And I know, I will say that they do come through the building periodically and give us feedback. So it's not like they never come through and say, well, this was open, that was open. They're very, they're very good about giving us feedback for all those things. And for the most part, we're very good with that. But I will, I will definitely have a conversation with Mark and think his brain about what we can do, whatever some potential costs, if we do an upgrade camera systems, for example, what that would cost. I know that's a big, big budget item, but maybe we can face that over time, but I need to have those, those conversations.
With the previous Alice trainings, has there ever been a rundown, like a tailored approach to each of the schools, like the how we handle these certain things?
There is, yeah. So we did a, I think it was a half or full day PD with our entire staff over the year, where we went through multiple scenarios. We did those over here in this building, and then we debriefed in the gymnasium. We had, I think, four or five police officers who were part of that, that whole session. We did a different exercise with our students here, and I guess we're planning to do one with the elementary school students starting next week. And obviously, they're catered to the age group. In fact, one of the books that we use for the elementary is right here. So it's, it's all encompassing about safety. It's not just about intruders, but it's a, it's a kind of an easy and friendly way that we can talk, or Officer Mark can talk to the students about what to expect.
And it's very specific to the Alice protocol, so it goes through what those, what that acronym stands for, and the teachers are able to talk about that with the students on a major grade level.
I was wondering, like, with the training, with the officers coming in, did they already go through like a checklist kind of thing by, for each school and say, look, these are things you need to look out for because of this building, ways it's designed?
Yeah, they do, yeah. So we talk about ways of exiting, whether through a door or a window, what would be the quickest way to exit this building, quickest way to exit that building if someone was in this part of the building. So they do run through those scenarios, and they do tell us, show the teachers how to do some of those things. So, yeah, I was there for all of it, was part of it. I thought it was very well received, and it was very well done.
I will say, I think it's been three, four years since we did an Alice training?
Yep.
The pre-pandemic, I think, was the last one.
It was pre-pandemic, and I think I was still a teacher.
And my.
I was a teacher here.
My.
Yeah.
My daughter was more nervous the night before, when she knew they had the Alice training the next day, and she came home very reassured by the process, so.
Yeah.
That's just, I mean, that's one sample, it's a one-person sample size, but she was freaked out the night before because she knew what it was, but then was reassured by the process and the way it was presented at the time.
It'll be a very similar process this time around as well.
Anything else we want to talk about on this right now? I think this is going to be revisiting, so.
I did just want to mention, I know Mr. McCormick mentioned that when bringing people in to the front door, they go through a checklist, and maybe it's just a simple conversation that used to be had, but I did notice today that two people were buzzed in without even a glance at the camera, from my perspective, and they didn't, I mean, one of them was my dad, so I went right out to get him, but the other one was, it was a student, but it wasn't even a glance at the camera before buzzing in. It was more of like, oh, I hear the buzz, now I'm going to go hit the button, and didn't take a second glance at who was there at the door.
Yeah, I think that, that setup, that physical setup is tough. That's why I asked about it, just because it is off, you know what I mean? It's not right there, that's what's tricky. By elementary school, you have the, you're not really in the window of.
We do a double, yeah, we have a double work.
Yeah, it's a little different setup. That's what, the, the way they built that high school building to buzz, it's just not set up to be, you don't have somebody there, that's why I was curious myself.
I just know, I mean, I know it was just my dad, but like if I wasn't there, he probably could have gone and walked right in, and no one would have noticed that it was him and not a student.
Pre-K discussion is the next item.
All right, so we have a re-presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Esposito to kind of show the committee kind of where we're at in pre-K and look into some of the decisions with enrollment and why that's happened. So it's just, Dr. Esposito?
Thank you. Who has the button?
One of you have it. Turn it off and on again and see if it works. Point it at the front button.
Oh, that's all right. She's got it. Look at you. Now I'm all sorts of, they're going to have to fix it over there, Tim. Oh, great. That's all right. It's on now, though, so it shouldn't work from here on out. Just put it back on present. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does that work?
No. I'll just, I'll sit over there.
I'll push the arrow, I'll push the arrow.
You can chime in.
Just give me a beep or something when you need it.
Are you sure?
Yep.
All right.
So clearly we're talking about the preschool programming.
Advanced, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So everything's predicated on the regulations and the fact that we need to be able to provide equitable services for our students with special needs. And our program must have the, an appropriate amount of slots in our, in our classrooms.
That's me. I figured it out. There you go.
You're fired.
So if you look at point number two, for public programs with integrated students with and without disabilities, the class size should not exceed 20 with one teacher and an assistant with no more than five students with disabilities, or this is where we fall, if the number of students with disabilities is six or seven, then the class size may not exceed 15 with a teacher or an assistant. So the next slide, thank you. So as we look at the preschool analysis as we have throughout this year, we, when I started, we looked at early intervention, the students that were coming through, we also looked at our child find efforts, and some of that's done through, through our preschool screening, but it's also done as we post information out in the community and we post things in the newspaper. And then we looked at other communities and talked to our, our neighbors through our collaboratives. And when we looked at what kinds of programming was appropriate and how are they servicing the influx of students with special needs, it drove us to discuss how the need to shift back to ensure that we are appropriately educating all of our students. And again, coming back to accessing for our students, this allows us to be able to serve more of the students in our community by ensuring that with 15 students in a class, up to six or seven, being able to be serviced with those that have special needs, you have 28 slots for students and 32 available for students that are not on IEPs. So by looking at that, we're able to really service a greater amount of students in our community. And all of those students will have diverse needs. They are students that are three and four-year-olds, so that gives us more grouping opportunities for our kids. It aligns with state regulations and our instructional ratios. We're able to observe new students as they move into the community, and that's really important because it allows us to have flexibility with our classrooms. It's giving us the opportunity to do best practice, and it's really supporting the overall community because of the number of students.
If I could also jump in?
Of course.
The bullet third from the bottom, I just want the committee to understand that students are found eligible for our preschool programming throughout the school year, not just in September. And so this shift will allow us to keep those spots open for those students that inevitably are going to need to join our program mid-year.
And that happens through early intervention throughout the year. So as kids are identified through our child find, it is, that does happen. So in this slide, it's really just a cute representation, honestly, of how we're going to be able to, through this pivot, service so many more students than I had just indicated, where the seven represents the students that we can have up to a class. Now, we're not starting the school year with this many students, but as the absorption of new students come in or are found eligible or through early intervention or move-ins, which we've had quite a few through this year, that it's some of the unexpected, we need to have opportunities in our classes so that we can do that naturally. And so we can have up to seven in one class in any of these mornings or afternoons, and then we can also have the students without disabilities be a part, and we can fill those up right in the beginning of the school year. So we will be able to have a full, you know, a full balance where we can offer the program to our community, and then if a student has special needs, then we have the ability to provide services and not, you know, not run out of ideally slots unless, unless something changes throughout the, throughout the year. The next is really a timeline of our program and how we've been morphing through, through the years. And I think the biggest that I take away on this is that it's fluid and responsive. That is truly what special it is. We can't say we're flexible anymore than I think what we do in our, in our field. We have to be fluid and be able to move swiftly for the needs of our kids and do it in an equitable manner. So this aligns with regulations, it aligns with our ability to service more kids, to be responsive to our families, and to reach our community.
And I think it's important also that the committee understands that our full day program, which was implemented, it was right before 2020, that we went, that we shifted one of our half-day programs to a full day program, is very recent in what we've been able to offer. And so shifting back to those four half-day programs is the model that we had before because that's the need that we had before, and then we have that need again. So we need to always be looking at our population and making adjustments to serve our students, what is appropriate, what is aligned with our, you know, compliance to laws and regulations, and what's best for kids. So this, no?
None of those.
None of those, okay. None of those? Okay. That's it. We stopped there.
Those are the only ones. Mr. McCormick, correct? In our-
Well, there was one more slide. I didn't-
One more slide. Just, it just-
Oh, is there one? Oh.
It's the half-day one, half-day two.
Right. And so this-
Oh, yes. Yes. Okay.
This slide proposes a full-day third classroom that we are exploring. I don't think that we have enough data to put that in place just yet. We are collecting information from our community. We sent a survey out to find out what the interest would be in a full-day program because we do need those half-day classes that are, that we know are best for kids. But we also know that a transition classroom to prepare students for kindergarten would be, would be ideal. So we are still exploring that option. So this slide sort of just shows what could be offered if that were a need that we could, that we could meet and that would be appropriate to meet.
So because we need a motion to discuss this further, I make a motion that we leave preschool program exactly as it is today?
Second motion. So-
Can you guys present it here?
No, as it is today. Not as it's presented, as it is.
Meaning the two half-day programs in the-
Yes, as it is today. Yep. So the first thing I would say is I think it's, it's not appropriate to come to us in April and ask us to change preschool program that parents are expecting to be a certain way. So I think it's inappropriate for you to do that. I think it's inappropriate for you to come to us and ask us to do that, or I think it's inappropriate for you to think that you don't have to come to us and talk to us about it because quite honestly, this impacts our, our parents and our students. I'm not saying anybody had any malice intended, intended in that. All I'm saying is, we are the representatives of the parents in the community and for us not to hear this until a parent came up and signed up a kid, I think it's completely and totally inappropriate. Now, this may very well be what is in the best interest for our students, but I don't understand that. And I'm not going to try to understand that in, on April 24th, after we've already told parents that there's not going to be a full-day program. I mean, look, I'm an honest and reasonable person. If you had a overwhelming argument, I would listen to it, but I've looked at these slides, I've read the slides, and I would really like somebody to explain to me how going from, and this is exact quote off your, off your form, goes from a five-day to a four-day to increase time on learning. I would love to understand how you do that. How do you go from five days to four days and increase time on learning? That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever.
I can explain that if you would like.
I would love, I would love for an explanation of that because it doesn't make any sense. So for those reasons, I couldn't, couldn't possibly support this today. Now, I will say that before, I'm sorry, before you, before you explain, and I'm happy to listen to it. I'm happy to listen to every argument you have about this in September or October or November, when our parents then have an opportunity to make adjustments to their schedules to accommodate what we are changing on their behalf, right? But to do this-
This sounds like a response to this year's school. How could they anticipate this in September if it's-
We can't anticipate this. It's a very fluid situation.
I understand that you can't anticipate. So you're, what you're telling me is that we have so many students waiting to get into North Springfield that we have to change the, the, the way that we do this.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So then, so then, so, okay, fine. Go ahead, please, explain.
Sure. So that kind of answers the question of moving from the full day to the half-day, that we have an influx of students who are requiring services, that we are by law required to service. And so by moving from a full-day program to a half-day program, we can service more students. We can get them into our school and we can teach them. The four-day, the five-day to four-day question that you asked, which we didn't talk about as much in our presentation, is because of our assessments. So our, our special edu, our preschool teachers are both teachers in the classroom, but they're also special education teachers. So they do a dual role. And so they are responsible for testing and evaluating every special education student along with teaching the general education population. It's a very unique role that other teachers, you know, you're either a general education teacher or you're a special education teacher. They are both. So they are out of the classroom a lot of the time, away from the students that they need to be teaching on a regular basis. So in a typical format, what you would expect in K to 12, you would have a special education teacher who services students and when that teacher has to do testing, they would do their testing. They're not being pulled away from the general education classroom, but these preschool teachers are. So by going from five days to four days, they are having a day set aside where they can get all of their testing and evaluations and IEP writing done and they're not pulled away from the students when they're supposed to be teaching them.
So is there not a stu, a teacher in that classroom when they're pulled away?
There is not.
So there's 15 kids running amok?
Well, there's support staff.
No, there's support staff. Yeah. No, there's, there's other-
Well, I mean, am I wrong?
We have paraprofessionals. We have substitutes.
Right. No, I understand, but I mean-
But not the teacher. She's not providing general, uh, direct instruction. And that, and that's where we, we've seen this year has been a drawback for our students.
And then this is something that Dr. Spizito did survey.
I did.
Several different districts around our area. And this is a model that a lot of districts use because of that very reason.
Right.
That they are seeing teachers being pulled away from direct instruction too frequently. So they went from that five to that four days of instruction. So that's, that's the information that, that we worked on throughout this year.
I, I would like to know when you were going to tell the school committee that you were planning on changing the pre-K program. I found out from a parent and that's how I, this got brought up. When were we gonna get, was this the month or was it because I asked for this information?
So I don't know that it was, uh, from our perspective, we had shared it with families, we had posted it and we have been making these, you know, from the conversations, all of the students that were in the full-day program are no longer all but one and that family was notified that all those students that were in the full-day had moved on. They were going into kindergarten this year. So that was not impacting any of those families. And the students that are coming in brand-new to our program are already coming in with a four-day program. So they, they, no, no new student into our school is unaware of this, that it's four days coming in.
I don't think that answers our question.
Yeah, so my question was when were you going to tell the school committee that you were changing this?
We have, when we were putting this together, the information didn't come down until the end of March. So it would have been this meeting because April was, we are in April. End of March was budget.
Actually, March 20th.
Thank you. It was March 20th, which was budget. So this was going to be the information. And it was in the last, my last write-up that there was more information on preschool coming. And I've had it in my write-ups to indicate that there's, I'm doing surveys, we're doing-
The monthly write-ups.
Thank you. The monthly write-ups.
That you present at the meeting?
Yeah, I have them in the bottom as future expectations or future conversations.
So you don't read that off at the meeting?
I don't. It's in the-
I don't remember this. I've had it mentioned before.
No, I understand. So that's fine. So you put it in the meet, in, in the, in the, in the reports, but at no point, to the, to my knowledge, and I could be wrong, did you ever say, we're looking at changing this program? And so this committee had no, as far as I'm concerned, maybe others on the committee did. I'm sorry, did I say something?
I'm sorry. No, I was, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. So at no point did, did this committee understand that that is something that you were looking at doing? You may have said, we're doing surveys. You may have said, we're looking at the program, but at no point did you say to this committee, by the way, and the funny thing to me is, parents coming in knew and we didn't. And we didn't. And we represent those parents. So-
We also, we also hire, hire Tim within overseas administration that has to make these day-to-day decisions.
This is not a day-to-day. This is changing.
This is a day-to-day thing.
This is a change.
Well, we can, we can disagree whether this is a day-to-day or not. I looked. I can't find where this, I, I think we approved the preschool program, but we also, when the preschool program was approved, it was for, for two, or four half-day classes.
And, and that's fine. We can disagree whether this is a day-to-day decision or it's a decision that needs to come to this committee. My point is, there is nothing, I, I, I'm gonna be very clear about this. I do not understand how townspeople in this town are being told stuff that this committee cannot support because we do not know. Right? We are the representatives of this town's citizenry. And when you start changing things for those citizens and do not give us at least the courtesy of letting us know that that's something that's going to happen, I don't understand it. So you can argue that this is within his, the superintendent's-
I would also argue that if this was end of March, that this happened and now this is our next opportunity in an open meeting to have this discussion. There's, the parents are gonna find out because the parents are answering these surveys.
This is not when the conversation started. The decision may have been made at the end of March and it wasn't the end of March. It was March 20th according to what I was, what we just heard and we had a meeting right after that.
March 20th was the meeting.
Was the meeting.
Was when we had the school committee.
Okay.
We met after that.
Okay. So these, these questions were, when, when was, when was kindergarten registration? When was all this done that did? Well, the parents found out, right? So the parents found out when?
It was, it was on or about the 20th. It was around that week.
Okay. So there was no ability to put into the packet information for this committee to understand before it went to the parents? That sounds to me like that's not reasonable.
It sounds to me like we need to have a policy then that would say if there's gonna be a change in this, they would need to submit it to us. If we don't have an actual policy written out that says that, then it's within their purview to pursue this with parents and find out what sort of direction the program is that they-
But that's not what-
We can't turn kids away because we don't have-
That's not what happened. They didn't ask at that point. They made-
But there's nothing, there's nothing that says they haven't to ask. That's what I'm saying. Is there's nothing in a policy that I could find and you could, I could be wrong. I, I looked through our policies to try to find something that said that we would have to be directly involved with this, but most of the language I found was, we've got an administration that's supposed to handle the day-to-day stuff and we are supposed to talk about it and we can, and if there's something that goes wrong, then it's our job to respond in that sense. But as far as this, if we can't, like what you, you've now made a motion to keep it the way it is, but what they're saying is that's not feasible with the number of kids that we have coming in and also to accommodate potential other students that might come in. And if they're still exploring a full-day option, then there's nothing set in stone on that too. And if we hamstring them by holding them to that, then now we have potentially a classroom of children that can't come into this school.
So I think we have a motion on the floor and, and a second that says what I made the motion to do, which is keep it what it is. And I think that they give them 30 days to come back to us with something different. But right now, I don't see anything that tells me that we need to do something different. And if we don't have the authority-
We just explained it.
If we don't, if we don't have, if we don't have, we don't- No, I'm actually, I have the floor. I'm actually speaking and I have the floor. No, I have the floor. I'm speaking. You can see that. I have the floor. You can keep talking over the audio wire, but I have the floor. So if we don't have the authority to do that, then I don't understand why we're even having the conversation, right? So the conversation is here because we do have the authority to change programs in, in the, in the school district. We are the only ones who have the authority to do that. I, you can change whatever you want within day-to-day, but this is a program that was established by the school committee. It wasn't established by a super, any superintendent. It was established by the committee. So if the committee establishes this, this program, this process, then it's the committee's purview to actually do that. So if we're gonna change that, it needs to come to this committee. You now have a motion on the floor and a second to leave it the way it is right now. If you have other information that needs to come to this, to me, this is not sufficient information, what we've been providing, to give me any reason to change what I made the motion to do. Now, if you want to come back next month and change that, fine, I'm happy to listen to it. But at this moment, that's what I have.
What are we changing next month? We just want the presentation.
The special education numbers will be the same next month.
Yeah, the numbers aren't changing.
The numbers of students that we need to service by law are not going to change by next month. This is the program that we need to service all of our students.
We're not fading, we're not fading out pre-K. We're keeping pre-K. So we're not changing the program, we're changing the numbers and how they work with the students. That's where it's based on the number of students that we need to service. We're not taking pre-K off the table. We're not saying that. I know it was a program that was loaded on by the school committee, but we're not taking this program away. We're making changes to the, how we educate based on the numbers of students that we have.
What, what is the change in this, the number of students from previous to now that requires the, the change?
Are you giving specific numbers?
Like what if, yeah, what's the, what do we know, what are the, um, the expected enrollment?
Did my take her a minute? We'll, we'll get those numbers for you in a second.
Okay.
I think I can answer. I do have the email up that I had, went back and forth with Mr. McCormick. Well, maybe you have a different, but what it says here is that we're looking at 21 available special ed spots as opposed to 27, no, 28, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So how many special ed's children do we have identified at this point?
I have to get that.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I thought I had more, but I just-
No, you're, we have 19 in, in the, with early intervention preschool in our current students from preschool screening. We have the ability, if everyone is eligible, to have 19 at the start of the school year. And we're in the middle of, middle of evaluations right now.
I just have a quick question. Full-day pre-K at a public school, from what I understand, is extremely rare.
It is extremely rare.
I just, because I know when my- I don't agree with that at all.
Unless it's in my personal experience.
Are you talking about small towns maybe? Because-
No.
No. All the regional districts around us all-
I, well-
Yeah, when I, I know when, when my children were, were looking for preschool options, it wasn't a thing here. It was just like a two-day, nine to 11. It, I'm just, I'm not saying it changes anything.
Town looked very, I'm sorry, interrupted.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying it changes anything on what we should be discussing in terms of what we need here, but I just think to offer a full-day pre-K at a public school is like something that's not usually seen. So I don't, I didn't think it was something that parents are expecting, but I, I just know from when my kids went, like, if you wanted full-day pre, a full day, you had to look elsewhere. That, that's what it was when I-
I know. When I was living in Auburn, it wasn't rare and in our area, surrounding area, it was, it was, it was a common place.
Gotcha.
So, but I would do, I mean, if I could find that out, I mean, you would-
I mean, it doesn't really change what you're dealing with, but-
The other thing I want to say is that if we had a full day, that makes us more appealing for our children that could come from out of the district too, if you're saying it's so rare. So that's another thing that is a perk of our-
Right. And that's why we're exploring the idea of having a third classroom, which would be so ideal to attract those students to our school. But we have to start with what we have to service and with twen, so the number that was asked before is 20 students. So we have a full day and two half-days, which is the proposal that is on the floor right now, the, um, the current model, that would only allow one open special education slot and that's not going to be sufficient for the number of students that we're going to get next year because we always have an influx of students.
How many on average every year?
What do we have this year?
So, Ms. Turner.
It varies, but-
But what's, what a few, five, 10?
Oh gosh, no. We've had, I think I've had eight referrals just from early intervention that have come in and that's not included.
During the school, the school year. But when students turn three through the school year, that we, you know.
And then, so the other, the other piece to keep in mind is that when, you know, one full day is in, in response, it is not common in our area. The needs of the students, we have an obligation, we have to meet them through regulation. When our, when our numbers fill up in a classroom, it does not give the opportunity to do best practice for which, you know, where do you place kids when you only have certain slots? Right now, going into the, the fall, we're full. In the current model we have, there is no availability to take any new students, including the ones that, that are, we haven't even touched from our preschool screening. So anyone from preschool screening that may, that we may need to evaluate, there is no classroom for them.
Mr. Ralston, Mr. Ralston has a question.
So when we first, oh, not first, a few moments ago, we were talking about the number of students who needed special education. And when I asked if we could have this conversation next month, you said our numbers for special ed aren't going to change, but then you just said, we've only done half the evaluations. And so I don't know how those two things- And so I don't know how those two things are the same.
Because we're not gonna have less, is what I'm saying.
Okay, but they're not, they're, okay, but they're not going to be the same. So if you came to us next month and said, we have 23 students who have special education needs and we only have 21 slots, which is what we heard earlier, then we'd have to make a decision that would, that would change the program to a half-day program. But right now.
We don't have enough slots now though.
No, you, you just told us that you need 21 slots. You have 21 slots and you have 19 or 20 students depending on which.
But that's not enough. That's next year.
Depending on what you just, okay, I can only go by what you just said to me. And I'm not trying to be argumentative.
There's only one spare.
I understand that, that there's only one spare. And I'm not suggesting that that is enough. All I'm saying to you is that you have said that you have 19 or 20 students who need services. We have 21 slots open. You wanna change a program and you have, you have enough slots open to accommodate the students today that need that information. You said you're only halfway through the evaluation. I'm asking you to take the next 30 days, go through, finish, finish that evaluation, come back to this committee, make a recommendation based on the evaluation you've done, and then we can make an educated decision. But you've come to us literally after you've gone to everybody else and said to us, this is what we need to do. And, and, and I'm not willing to do that just based on that. I wanna hear the numbers. I'm willing to support you. I don't, it makes no difference at all to me how many half-days or full-days we have. Makes no difference at all. What I wanna do is be able to have a logical conversation with other people that I represent about why we've done what we've done. And right now, I don't have that. You've not given me the tool to do that. So I'm asking you to take the next 30 days and do that. I'm happy to have the conversation again, 30 days from now.
So you, so you, but you've started this with, we're waiting till April to have this discussion. If we're now going to wait till May, that's an extra month before they can make a commitment to what the program's gonna look like next year.
Right. I'm saying you wait until April to bring it to this committee. The towns, some of the townspeople are aware of it. This committee was not aware of it until April. And I'm saying that now that I'm aware of it, I'm not willing to make a decision tonight that's different than what we already have in place.
What I'm saying is we have people who are doing this that need to meet these numbers and have room for additional kids if possible. And they're telling us what the best way to address this is. Also on the table right now, because we're keeping it the same way it is right now, is the, the day where the teachers can do all the IEP and all the other work for the other students and not be pulled out of the classrooms under regular circumstances.
And I'm not suggesting that in May, we can't have a conversation about how we address that. But right now, I don't think this information's come to us in a timely fashion enough that we can make a decision. I'm not going, myself personally, you can call for the vote, Mr. Chairman. You can call for the vote and the vote will go as it goes. All I'm saying to you is I am not prepared with the information I have in front of me to make the vote that, that, that we're going to change this program based on the information I have. That's it. That's all I got.
So do you need to amend your motion that we will revisit it in 30 days if it so passes or at the next meeting?
I think they can bring it back anytime they want. I'm happy to do that. If you wanna make a friendly amendment to that, I'm happy to take that. They can come back in 30 days with the, with more information, because I think the question was asked by.
Oh, if I call it a friendly amendment.
If I may, if I ask me.
Well, you can make it unfriendly amendment for all I care. Friendly amendment would be the, one that I can accept without going through the whole amendment process. But if you wanna make a friendly amendment to that, that's fine.
If I may, I'm just, I'm just still stuck on the presentation that we gave this evening, I think very clear with why the numbers are the way they are and what we need to do to make sure we service our kids appropriately. I think that was very clearly stated to me. You had said, I'm just unclear in this part. Is it my purview, our purview make decisions? We're not feeding out the program. But, you know, what, where does this stand?
It's my, my interpretation is that this program, the numbers and this presentation should be adequate for us to stamp or sign off on what you guys are trying to do. I don't think that it needs to be a vote, but the motion is on the table that we keep it this way right now. I, I think that we have approved this. I looked through, and if anything, we need a new policy then, that this would need to be brought to us with timeframes or whatever else it would have to be. Um, and I think that is where we are lacking right now. If this, the fact that we're having this conversation in this manner means there's something missing in the policy about how this needs to be reported. It's either not clear or it's, was never written to begin with because we didn't think it was an issue. And if that's the case, then we have a policy subcommittee that could work on this, come up with some sort of language that would keep us better in the loop. We can't help it if they send a survey out to parents about how many kids are gonna come in and they suggest this to the parents and we don't know about it. We're not here every day.
I also would like to add that Dr. Esposito in her March 20th update did say the preschool applications were available online, which would have indicated that we had considered a change in the time that we were offering.
That's fair.
I, I apologize that it wasn't as explicit as far as what we were thinking about. But the needs are what they are and I would just ask the committee to make your decision based on what we presented and what we are obligated by a lot of services as a school and what is best for students.
I have a question. So you, you said you're still halfway through evaluating, what did you say?
We have, we are constantly evaluating students. So we are in the midst of evaluating, our EEP meetings.
So is your list of children that you have to complete at this time done? Like, do you have kids on the roster? Not kids that we don't know about yet, but kids, like you have meetings coming up for new children?
I do have meetings coming up. We have to determine eligibility, but we do have.
So wouldn't this be a good idea to, to hold on for a month like Ron suggests? Because what if we need more? What if you have five more and then you, that means you only have a few slots available at that point so that you need to open up another classroom like you suggested? I don't, I don't see why waiting another month to see what maybe the real number, as best as you can get by the time school closes in June or whatever, you know, a, a real number at that point, what, what it looks like. I mean, if you only get two more kids, then that's a different story. But if you get five or six, then at that point, you still don't even have that many extra slots available, which is what you were saying you were trying to work out in the first place.
We can absorb the kids that are through the pipeline should they all be eligible and continue to have slots to absorb for the next year. That's, that's what we are looking to do. We don't wanna have to come back, in an ideal situation, to come back next year and be proposing a whole new classroom.
I said in a month.
Right. Right now, we have students that should everyone be eligible, we've maxed out to even absorb anyone new. So what we are doing is by saying, taking what our current model is and changing it to the four, which really essentially is meeting the needs of our students, we are affording our community availability to have slots so we're not having to make changes or come back and say, we need more, another classroom. Now, there's no guarantee that we wouldn't be coming back, but at least this gives us the ability to work with early intervention and to work with our child find efforts in the event that we go to as many as 28 students. That, the, the likelihood of going to 28 students between now and September, no. But the likelihood of getting to 21 or to maxing out our classrooms is much higher. And then that doesn't afford us to take any new students that may be referred. Last summer when I started, I had three early intervention referrals that came in over the summer.
And to add to Dr. Esposito's response and to maybe further answer your question, is that we're currently taking tuition applications for next year currently. And if we have to start turning families away, they're going to likely get preschool somewhere else. And so we want to be able to guarantee those over the next month.
The process for applications is that they would apply, we'd be able to enroll our students that are not on IEPs.
Just like our kindergarten enrollment's happening right now, our preschool enrollment is happening right now.
And all that's happening at the same time.
So we have a motion on the table. Ron, this is a procedural question. The motion is to keep it the same. If the motion does not pass, then somebody has to make a motion to do something different. The only motion on the floor right now is to keep it the same as it, as it is. And, and again, if you wanna make a friendly amendment, they can come back next month and make another presentation. I'm willing to accept that friendly motion, uh, friendly amendment. But the motion on the floor right now is that we keep it the same as it is currently right now and there's a second. If that doesn't, if that doesn't pass, then somebody has to make another motion to do whatever it is that they think is the right one.
I still don't feel this is a voting issue, which is the procedural problem that I have with it.
Regarding the policy question, we just voted on the school calendar and then later on in the agenda, we have the high school curriculum laid out. And I don't know if we're voting on that like as an approval. So wouldn't this kind of fall into that same thing we're talking about, structural, structure of the school year for the district? And then the structure of the classrooms for the high school, wouldn't the structure of the preschool fall into the same kind of policy? They should be voted on.
Yes, it, it seemed, it appeared that way. That's why I looked it up to try to find something that told me whether it was a voting issue or not. So it makes, it makes sense to sign off on it. What I'm saying is, so if we do not pass.
Don't we get to question and decide? I mean, if we get, if we have to sign off on it, don't we get to question and decide whether we agree? I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we were elected simply to sign off on whatever was brought in front of us. And I don't think that that's what you're implying. I'm simply saying that if it's something that was brought in front of us, don't we get to have a discussion about it and don't we get to disagree and then vote based on what we believe is the right thing to do?
Yes, we do. What I'm saying is we, if we vote to keep it the same, then we, and I add a friendly amendment to revisit it in 30 days depending on the numbers they come up with.
And I officially accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, so that's our friendly amendment now. If we, if this vote does not pass, now how are they proceeding? It sounds like we still have to revisit this in 30 days in that, in that case.
Or they don't bring us any more information and then they just stay with the program the way it is?
Correct.
My concern is we're gonna lose some potential students in the meantime. That's, I mean, I think that's.
There is that risk and also if we need to open a third class, we're gonna have to, if it saves the limit of this year.
We, we talk about a lot about bringing more students to the work field. We're talking now about, I think, I feel like it's because of how it was presented to us or not presented to us that we're making this decision. Like, that's not our job to slap somebody on the wrist and say, hey, you should have brought this to us earlier. Now we're gonna make you wait 30 days. But I, I feel like that's the conversation that I've just listened to in the last 20 minutes.
Well, we have a motion on the table to keep things the way they are with a friendly amendment to revisit in 30 days. All in favor of keeping things the way they are and revisiting in 30 days? All opposed? Motion passes 3 to 2. So we will, uh, we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Next, transportation bid update.
So about a month and a half ago, we opened up our bids for our transportation. That's regular ed, special ed, and athletics and activities. Uh, as you may or may not know, our, our bid ends, ended this year with AA transportation, so we have to go through the official bidding process. Uh, AA was the only bidder. Um, we put this out, it was in the newspaper, uh, through, through two news cycles. So we follow the only bid laws. AA bid on this, uh, we were able to spread out, um, the contract for five years, which kept down our direct cost down to a roughly 6% per year increase. Um, if, obviously if that was three years, you're looking at around a 10% increase. Uh, so that was the, the thought behind the three to five-year, um, spread out of the, of the contract. So I, the motion, uh, I, I, well, I, this is, this is basically, you have a copy of the contract in your packets. This is something that needs to be approved by the board and then signed off by every member of the board, including myself, and then sent to our legal. And this would, um, this will begin starting end of August, running through the next five schools.
So we're signing it and then Kevin will look at it if we agree with it.
And this is just so, you know, just so you know, um, the contract that we're, I provided with you, I have the, the hard copy for you to look at. Is almost a carbon copy of last year's, just with a date difference and an increase in prices.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the transportation contract?
Yep, make a motion to approve the transportation contract as outlined.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Kevin's looked at this already, right? He says the same thing as last year. Do you guys have any questions on the contract? All in favor of approving the transportation contracts as shown here in our packet? For yeas, Ron's not here right now for that vote, so. All right. Next item is the high school program studies.
Uh, so this is something that we present, typically the high school principal will be here. He's, he's home sick this evening. But this is the draft of the 23, 24 program studies for the junior high school. The first page prior to the program studies is kind of the updates, as you would see as you look through the document. Uh, we have, I won't go through every single minor part of this, but, um, what we did going back from a year to, to now, we looked at, for example, English courses where it was predominantly all elective courses. We've now offered English 9, 10, 11, 12 plus English electives. Uh, with our math courses, we went from integrated math 1, 2, and 3 to now algebra 1, algebra 2, geometry, which is the more traditional and by the recognized, uh, way of kind of breaking up your math instruction. Um, we've added some courses. We've added some courses to the STEM department. Um, so we have four courses there. Um, we also have some language around our internships. And we're looking to add one credit for advisory class, which is, which is a, roughly a 30-minute opportunity for students to be weekly where they follow an advisory curriculum. Uh, that's one credit per school year. And that's grades 9 through 12 would be offered that, that one credit. Uh, we're still maintaining the 35 credits per year with 130 credits total in order to graduate. Most students accumulate more than 130, so 130's on the low end. Just to do a few of the rough math, 35 times more is more than 130. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. Um, I can answer any questions you may have about the program studies.
Um, I have one question.
Yes.
Is the advisory credit going on as an additional credit or is it a required credit?
Everybody has advisory, so it's gonna be one of those things where, um, I'm gonna say this, it's, everybody should receive that one credit.
Yep.
Okay? Um, and I think the teachers, the advisory teachers will help you get that one credit. Where before it was no credit and we feel like it's at least worth one if it's, it's getting once a week.
Absolutely.
So before we just had the math 1, last thing.
We had integrated math 1, integrated math 2. Prior to me arriving in the district, there, there was a, they branded the math curriculum. Uh, we've since seen a lot of turnover with those math teacher positions and we've gone back to the more traditional, recognized algebra 1, algebra 2, geometry.
Is the math advisor helpful in that transition at all?
Is the math advisor helpful in that transition at all?
In part, yeah. And then, and he was also very helpful with the, with the new curriculum network.
That also follows that same traditional breakdown.
Stally deciding until Ron came back in, so. Doc, the high school curriculum, Ron, you missed, you missed the, the vote about the transportation.
Transportation. That was a hot one.
I think we should transport people.
So now we're talking, uh, the curriculum?
Yep.
Do we need a motion to approve the high school 2023, 2024 program of studies?
I apologize because it wasn't good. Did you go through the changes in the program?
I did broad strokes, yes, yep.
Are there any, um, like in the, the STEM, you said there were some changes there. Was that what?
So, John, we got to, before you do that.
We got to put a motion up and then we'll.
I make a motion to approve the program of studies as presented, sorry. We have to have a motion to send it.
We'll say it.
Conversation, sorry. Go ahead.
Floor is yours, John. Sorry. Um, you mentioned there's some, uh, changes to the STEM portion. What are the highlights there?
So you have, um, overall, so STEM is offered throughout the district. I think it starts at grades one, strangely.
K.
K, so we have STEM concepts being taught as early as, as kindergarten all the way through the high school. Um, and we want to add these, these three, intro to electronics, woodworking technology, and business engineering. We're also in the process, um, we met with a representative from Project Lead the Way a few weeks back. And I'm in the process of applying for a grant that will give our teachers some additional training in some of these, these courses that we just highlighted. So what that does is give that teacher access to the full curriculum, the networking component. Um, Project Lead the Way is a internationally recognized kind of program. That really is one of the leaders in STEM education. So that's how we, we hope to add some more elective courses in STEM and make it a little more robust as well.
Would the woodworking technology?
We have a lot of that, those supplies already, so we felt we could use a lot of that.
Same thing, like, how are you going to do that? That was industrial arts when I was at school.
Remember the wood shop that was in the old high school years? Yeah, it was real cut up. It was real cut up.
What's, what's the teacher's name?
Is this a joke or?
No.
No, I can almost, I can picture him, but he.
Bob Hughes.
It was Mr. Hughes.
I know, I know. Oddness. Sorry. They were from town.
I remember that. I was, I remember making little, it was a, like a pencil holder that was two dice. We had to use the drill press to make the dots on the dice with the dye. Sorry for the flurries. All right, so we have a motion to second. Any other discussion on this?
So just as, uh, going forward, um, Mr. McCormick, if, if, when you give this to us to review, um, it would be really good if you could just give us the changes, like page 12 changed from this to that kind of thing. I know you just gave us the overview, right?
Right there.
Is that in here, in the packet?
It should be. It was, it's not, it was meant to be.
Can I see it?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I just want to see, because I, I was looking specifically.
It's not, I apologize, because that's what we, I drafted that for that particular reason.
Okay, well, I apologize if you did and it wasn't, but I didn't see that, so. Thank you. Nope, that would, that would be. I didn't see it, I apologize, and I don't see it in the packet, but that's okay. Did, did I miss something? No, no. So yeah, I don't think it made it, but that's, if we can make sure that that's in there.
Didn't, that's, that's on me, because I, that's why I put this together.
Stuff happens.
Because I know it's a big document, I know what you guys know, but I'll play a picture of what's, what's going on in it.
That was a drawing, of course, it's freaking.
Oh, it's freaking.
So, will we have a motion to second? Any other discussion on this? All in favor of approving the high school 2023, 2024 program of studies? All right. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so, um, start off on Wednesday evening, April 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30. You may have received this flyer to go on again tomorrow. We're having, I know it's our first, but it's, it's our first in a very long time, a community health fair. Uh, we have over 20 different organizations that will be attending. Um, and the goal of this, of this health fair is to give families, students, anybody who wants to attend, some access and education around all of the supports that are available to our, our families here at Northbrook Field. So, give you just a very quick example, we have Big Brothers and Big Sisters, we have municipal counseling, Worcester County DA's office, we have community health projects, we have Quibowoc Hills Substance Abuse Alliance, just the name of a few. Like I said, we have over 20, including for those who want a COVID booster shot, that will be available that evening as well. Uh, there are some door prizes, there is free pizza, um, until it runs out, but.
Health pizza?
What's that?
Health pizza?
It's, uh, I don't know how healthy it gets, but you can take the cheese off if you'd like. But we're hoping, this will be in the high school gymnasium, we would like to see as many students and families as possible. And again, another activity that we've put on to bring the school and community together as much as we can. So that's Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30. Late last month, or even early April, I forget the exact date now, Board Health approved $4,000 in ARPA funds uh, to be allocated to the school district to offset our cost of revitalizing our recycling program. We haven't been actively recycling in several years, and part of it is probably, I'm sure due to COVID. Some of it was an oversight, so we need to be back and actively recycle. So when we receive this money, it's going to pay for our recycling dumpster, plus all the supplies for our individual classrooms, plus the literature on why we're doing it for, for our, our staff and our students. So that's going to be starting, um, end of this week, early next week at the latest. So we're happy that's getting back on the running. On April 11th, I attended the Worcester County Superintendent Association meeting. Um, and typically this meeting, we have guest speakers, we talk about upcoming legal issues. This particular meeting, we had Mike Long come and speak as the guest speaker. He is the MASSS lead attorney. Um, he does a lot of, uh, case review for superintendents and school districts across the state. Um, and Mike talks a great deal about the governor's operating budget and kind of where that, um, will fall for our community, but also all of Worcester County. And also, uh, contract negotiations, which I know we went through last, last spring, but that's an ongoing endeavor for law districts and just how to make those, um, more amenable. So that was the topic of conversation on the 11th. On Wednesday evening, April 12th, I attended the Quibowoc Hills General Boarding Meeting at, um, it was at 308 Lakeside. Um, they're having these dinner meetings, if you will, but this is, this is really an interesting meeting. This, this really centered on a lot of the data that we've collected in this community over the last couple of years around how we want to better support our health priorities, both physical and mental health. And so we started out a conversation based on this data about what our next steps will be and what are the four to five priority areas for these communities to look at with grant writing and supports for families and students. And then lastly, um, for now, tomorrow, we have our rescheduled half day. Tomorrow, Tuesday, April 25th, this will be our last PD opportunity of the year for staff. And this is, um, around our DEI initiative, and this is working with our consulting group ideas. Uh, this is around inclusion, diversity, and belonging. So this will be our last half day PD, 12 to 2 in the elementary school cafeteria.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Um, around the $4,000 from ARPA, from the Board of Health. So only because obviously there's financial component there. Is that $4,000 coming into the school's budget and then the, if the school has to, to do through its warrants process that? Or are you purchasing $4,000 worth of, of recycling supplies and then sending the invoices over to them? I'm, I'm looking for the check and balances.
It's being, it's being funded through the ARPA fund. Um, so the, the monthly rental, which is starting now through all of FY '24, and then all of the recycling mechanics that we purchased are, are being paid, paid for by the ARPA funds.
Wait, I'm asking the mechanics of that. So is that something that this committee has to improve through its warrant process? Or is that stuff that you're purchasing on some other line item in the, in the?
The ARPA is a town, townwide grant, so they're, they're giving us 4,000 of the, or, or, I'm saying giving is probably the wrong term.
Allocating.
Allocating 4,000.
And I understand, I'm just trying to understand, because we're not like the prior department, where they can just say, we're allocating $4,000 to you. We actually have a budget and we're responsible for that budget. So I'm just asking for the mechanics around that? And if you don't know, that's perfectly fine, I'm okay with that. But that's a question I would have, is that, is that $4,000 coming into the school's budget? And then we are going to use those funds to purchase the stuff that you're, that you're talking about?
No, as I understand it, it's not coming into the school's budget. So it's, we have, we have, we basically, um, send the invoice downtown and it gets paid through downtown.
So you're saying like the Board of Health holds the money?
Well, the Board of Health approved it and the Slough Board approved it.
Maybe the Board of Assemblymen is dealing with it.
So the ARPA is a big pool of money that a lot of people have access to, and they, they give us 4,000 for, for this particular endeavor.
So just for our, we buy, we say we've been here, costs us $4. You're going to submit an invoice back down to the town, they're going to validate that that was $4 spent on the recycling bin, they're going to sign off on it, it's not on this board?
I'm pretty sure that's accurate, yeah.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking. I assumed that, but I didn't know that, and since we don't operate like there was some towns funds, I just wanted to make sure that.
I have a, I have a question in regards to the, um, community health improvement plan meeting. Does any of that, um, involvement have to do with, was that involved at all with the Northbrook Field Board of Health?
Uh, no, that was, that's through Quibowoc Hills.
All right.
Yeah, so I don't know if they'll have a role with it down the road. I'm assuming they will, because I think some of this is going to lead to a bigger grant opportunity for, um, substance abuse prevention, for example. So they may have a part in that, but this was just a planning meeting, which they've had two, we have one more that's coming up.
So I looked at this earlier, but I didn't look at, I mean, I'm looking at it in a little more detail. You might want to explain some of the other things that were on that, that helped out to you. As you talked about the COVID vaccination clinic, but there's other things that other people in this community might be interested in, like the flu vaccination clinic and stuff like that, I don't know. Do you want to, because I'll read them, I just.
You can read off what's.
Yeah, so it says door prizes like refreshments, community resources, COVID-19 vaccination clinic, vaccine clinic, flu vaccine clinic, health presentations, right, of course, blood donation drive, which is a great thing, right? Narcan training, health screenings, and more. So I think there's a lot of other stuff there that, that people might be interested in looking at. And the flyer that.
This has gone out four times and will go one more time.
Right, so the flyer that Mr. McCormick is holding right now has a QR code that if you wanted to scan it, um, if you were so inclined, you could actually pre-register for your vaccinations, um, prior to the event. So I think, you know, if that's something that you're interested in doing, um, I think that's a, you know, an opportunity that we're providing to our community.
And this is by the school that this is put on by?
So we have a, a monthly group that meets, um, Northbrook Field Community Outreach Committee, which we started after, um, the national night out event in August. So it's myself and members from the community, uh, and that group has just grown every month. And we put on multiple events over the course of the year, to kind of, like I said, to kind of bridge that gap between the community and the schools.
What was the name of the group again? Sorry, hold on.
Northbrook Field Community Outreach Committee. Just rolls off the tongue.
I think you've sent us invites.
I have.
Yeah. We get invites from Mr. McCormick to those.
Our next meeting is actually tomorrow, just before we have our health fair.
Quick question about the recycling program. What exactly is being recycled? Like what's, like, is corduroy paper, that kind of thing, like?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a flyer that's going out to all staff, which kind of shows you what can recycle, what cannot. So it's, it's basically plastics, cardboard, not paying appeals, not used on the middle of cups, those kind of things. So, uh, we want to be very clear about what we can recycle. Uh, and this is something that, and Olivia can attest to this, we have a lot of students looking for community service. We have a lot of, you know, National Honor Society and StuCo members who are looking to help out. So it may be something that they, they help out with the process as we move forward too.
Is it something similar to like what you would be able to recycle at your own house through the?
Yes.
Um, town recycling center?
It's similar, yes.
I assume we're going to be doing that at the cafeteria as well for?
Yeah, it's going to be in all the classrooms, all the meeting places, yeah.
This is a state.
Yeah, this is something that we have to do, because it's not really, you know, I, I want to say that we are doing our, our good deed, but we also have to do it, so this.
Vote to the good deed.
It's both.
All right. Any other questions? Move on, uh, budget updates? Do you have any other budget updates besides?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to add, and Tim, you can attest to this, because we've been to now two finance committee meetings for the last month, three weeks.
Yeah, it's been two in the last month.
Uh, we did a very similar presentation, almost identical, uh, to the one that I gave this committee back in March to the FinCom, uh, which I believe the first evening, all three board staff members were there as well. Um, we had a slight decrease with the overall increase of our budget, and that was based on some of the transportation numbers that came in after we got the final bid, plus some changes likely to some of our displacements. So, um, we went, it became a 15.2% increase overall, um, from, from last year to next year, this year to next year, excuse me. Um, and our last meeting was again, just looking at just different ways that we can, that, that both FinCom and school could look to make this budget work. And where we left it, um, I believe, Tim, is that they were going to give, send me some, some more kind of guidance on numbers of what they could and could not do. So I'm waiting for that and, um, hopefully that's coming soon.
And once we get that, then our job is to go back. It's been, it's, it's been two visits and it's going to be more while we, while we're through this one.
Right.
It's been a relatively pleasant process so far. So it's been, it's been a conversation, which is what we're shooting for this year. And, uh, once they send us what they're looking at, then, uh, Mr. McCormick will, at the next visit, explain the implications of whatever the number is on that. So as of right now, the budget is where we voted it for, actually it's a little less than we voted it for.
Yes.
And then, once we get through this process, we can revisit and vote on whatever the finalized budget ends up being that goes to town meeting. That's it for right now, but it's been a good conversation so far. And I thank the finance committee for inviting us. Next. I'd just like to say, I, I wasn't invited, but, uh, yeah, it's, I'm glad that there's progress.
Yeah, if, if you guys want, we could post it and all go. We just have to, it's one of those like, they email and say, you guys show up. I, this is where McCormick does most of the topic, talking, I just kind of sit there and chime in as needed. But if we go, if more than two of us show up, we have to post it. The selectmen posted their, their attendance at the first night we were there. So if that's the case, and you guys want to go, and we want to go as a group, we can do that. We just need to let Mr. McCormick know a couple of days in advance, so that he can properly post it as a, a joint meeting.
Okay.
So reach out to me and we'll, we'll sort it out and make sure we're not all going at once without proper channels. Administrators' reports. Uh, I got, Dr. Gould was first, he's not here right now. Um, sounds like he's got a lot going on here, some of which Olivia already covered. April 6th, faculty and seniors played a game of basketball. Who won? Olivia, who won?
Uh, the faculty won.
Did they play fair?
I was going to say, did they cheat?
I don't think so.
All right, that's good. Um, we went to the MIAA annual meeting. High school front office hired a new administrative assistant. Welcome to the team, Ms. Brittany.
Pooch and Thara.
Poochow.
One more time, sorry. Pooch and Chow?
Yep.
Okay.
Takes some practice. It's like the cleaning, rolls off the tongue, right?
Welcome, Ms. Brittany H. On, uh, March 31st, high school celebrated International Transgender Day of Visibility. Our future continues to establish her presence by giving students a voice through multimedia platforms. Spirit Week we talked about. High School Administration collaborated with the faculty to discuss the practice of employing the essential question. Is that?
So that, that's, essential question is when we talk about curriculum alignment and playing purposely for our lesson planning and when we're teaching kids. So the essential questions, the overarching questions that kind of drive the discussion and are important for students. So that appears on, running those.
Okay.
Program studies, we already talked about that. Portrait of a graduate. Portrait of a graduate.
Portrait of a graduate are your 21st century skills that we feel outside of, you know, the content areas that kids are learning, that we want students to be, have by the time they graduate high school. So I'll give you an example, collaboration, being able to collaborate with others is something that we want all of our graduates to have, those skills. So we did that work starting last year into this year, and it's outlined in the program studies, I think in the first three or four pages.
So the essential question relates to the portrait of the graduate?
No, does not. Go ahead.
It's a part of it, it's part of making that portrait.
Not necessarily, no, but.
Recent snow cancellation, they rescheduled the half day to tomorrow. So let's reiterate that again, if you're watching at home, half day tomorrow.
Sorry, I have to excuse myself. I have to leave. Sorry.
April 13th, Kristen Rose, Chaperone Students to the Gay-Straight Alliance Leadership Council Meeting at Assabut Valley Regional High School. Rising 7th grade orientations coming up on May 16th. And from May 22nd to May 26th, rising 7th graders will be invited in small groups to Shadow Middle School. We already talked about that too.
Yes.
Next time, we're just gonna have Olivia read.
She's already talked about it.
And did you write some of this?
Yeah.
Alright, next we have North Brookfield Elementary School.
Thank you. So we also engaged in some professional learning around essential questions, and we are entering our spring assessment interval, so that includes our common assessment, which is the math growth. We have our benchmark assessment system, which is a reading assessment. Obviously, we have our MCAS assessments this spring. We also have field trips coming up. So it's a very kind of chaotic spring, a lot of fun, but also, you know, a lot of work to do. We are concluding our final year with the Tier 1 PBIS Academy. It's called the SED Academy now, Social, Emotional and Behavioral Academies, through the DESI's MTSS, work that they do with school districts. We are in our first year of Tier 2, so both groups, both teams are going to be doing their tiered fidelity inventory, which basically assesses to what extent we are implementing PBIS with fidelity at those two different levels. So we'll get that data, and I generally include that in my final report for the year, so you can look forward to that. Hopefully, we see some growth in our implementation. The third quarter grades closed, report cards went home, we are in our MCAS testing season, so the dates are there for you. We just finished ELA the week before break. We have math coming up and science, technology, and engineering for grade 5. Earth Day, have to shout out Mr. Shelburne for his organization, as Mr. McCormick already mentioned, but also our volunteers who donated their time and talents. We had former staff members come back to run stations, we had school committee running a station, we had some other community members, the Department of Recreation and Conservation was there. It was great. A special shout out also to the North Brookfield Police Department that donated 43 bike helmets. So I can't remember which officer was there, whether it was Chief Smith, or Churchy, or Officer Martin, but he was down with Mr. Marr near the softball field, and Mr. Marr was running some bike safety station, bike safety station, and he had about five helmets with him, and all the kids wanted one. Everyone was like, I don't have a helmet, you know, I ride my bike, but I don't have a helmet. And so he's like, let me go get more. And he brought back 40. So he gave them all out to students, it was just awesome. So when you see students riding, thank the PD. Then lastly, we are in our kindergarten registration season, so letters are being sent home to families, and registration is open, so that's what's happening at NDES. Any questions?
No, okay, welcome. Doctor Esposito?
Thank you. So back in January, I came and shared with you that we were participating in the tiered focused monitoring, so I have an update to that. We received notification that they gave our, they had a chance to go over all of our findings, and they gave us full compliance in all the areas of special education, and they found us fully compliant in the areas of civil rights, with the exception of four. And over the next two weeks, I'll be working with Mr. McCormick and our coordinator, and be developing a, what's called a SIMP, which is our Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan. And once that's completed, it will be posted on their website. And so everyone that is wondering what those four areas are, or what our, what our action plan will look like, that will be available for the community to take a look at. And we are, as I stated in here, grateful to the community and the staff for this process. It's a three-year from beginning to end, and we're two years in, we have one more year, which will be really getting ourselves fully in compliance in those other four areas, and obviously sustaining and maintaining where we are. So that's something to kind of celebrate, that we've worked really hard and have that information to share. The extraordinary relief, which is the, for the Office of Finance for Circuit Breaker, we submitted for extraordinary relief. We should hear back any day now, and that was submitted in March 31st, and that is in response to additional expenditures that we faced this year in special education. So we had submitted that and we're waiting. Preschool screening, we completed that on April 5th and 6th. We aligned our process with what kindergarten is doing this year, and we had all of our staff from preschool there, and our clinicians, and they got to meet all of these families that came in and signed up. It was wonderful, our families will be receiving a letter indicating how their child did, and then we'll be inviting families back in the fall to do screening again for anyone that missed the opportunity this spring. Some professional development, going back to preschool, our preschool teachers were able to participate in the, another kind of round of their transdisciplinary play-based assessment. We have a trainer that has come in, her name is Amy Seville Nelson. She came recommended by an area district, and this is her second time being on site, but I think this is her fourth time working with our staff this year. She's been assisting them in writing the evaluations, conducting this new developmental approach to evaluating students. And she came in, and Ms. Priestley was present for that, we've done a survey with the staff. So we're continuing to move forward, and the staff are working extremely hard to adopt this new approach of assessment that they really, I think, have embraced, and see it as just an extraordinary way to help identify what kids are, set appropriate goals. And in that vein, we have a number of students with diverse learning needs that are coming into our district. So our speech and language pathologist, Caitlin Lawrence, conducted some in-house training, she started today, on agenerative assistive technology in communication, which is AAC. And this is something that she came to us very highly skilled, and it is the, how students can use iPads as a way to assist them in communicating. And so we have purchased iPads, we have an application on the iPads called Touch Chat, and a number of our students that are non-speaking are, this is a way for them to make connections in a classroom, to find their voice that they may not have otherwise until they learn to speak. And by the teachers and by the teachers and the clinicians learning this and being taught this, they're able to work in the classroom with other students, so promote socialization. And it's wonderful that we have someone that's an expert on staff to do that.
Definitely a shout out to Caitlin Lawrence, who I observed that training today, she was phenomenal. It was great.
And the staff.
Very lucky to have her.
Yeah, very lucky to have her. And the staff very, very excited to learn. And this is, the preschool has come, they're just so much embracing the new learners that are coming into our program, and hence the whole conversation I think we've had tonight. And then our curriculum, in the high school, we've been able to bring in and pilot a new curriculum that's more supplemental to two of our high school programs, and it was vetted and proposed by the teachers, and both, I believe, Ms. Priestley and Dr. Gould and myself and some of the teachers sat, and we listened to a presentation early in the fall. And we're going to be looking at how this integrates into our programs in the rest of the spring and into the fall next year. So just more information to come as we see how this, how this works in our, in our programs, two of our programs. So that's, that's what's happening in the Student Service Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Somebody invited me to the quiz, but yes, I have a question. Can you share with us what the four issues were that they found through their audit?
What the four issues?
You said there were four, right?
There are four, yes. I don't have the four in front of me, but what I can say is that they, two of them are in the process of being rectified already. One is a district. It is more of a, we'll be working with the principals, and it is around, can you remember the title of it, Mr. McCormick? I don't remember the title, but it's about.
I don't have a head, no.
I can't either. But it's one that will take a full year for us to assess. It's a, it's a long, it wasn't something that is about, you know, fixing paperwork or things. It's a real, it's a full, in-depth assessment of our school. And the other one, I'll truly, I can't remember what the third one is, but we're, I probably am more than 50% done with our action plan already. And then the last one, like I said, there's four of them, but two out of the four, we're almost 50, we're about 100% done with those, with two of them.
Can we get those with the next school community?
Yeah, they will be posted by May 3rd, by May 5th. Which is why I'm presenting it today to say to you.
Yeah.
That the whole corrective action plan will be in place, and it's actually posted before we met again, which is why I shared with Mr. McCormick.
I completely appreciate that. All I'm saying is if I get cornered on the side of the road, and somebody asks me about them, and I don't even know what they are, that's kind of.
It'll be on the DESI website by May 5th, I believe, is the date.
Right, and I'm asking if you can, if we can have it, just, yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Yep.
In your report next month, I'll just hand it to the folks.
Absolutely.
I guess I would like to.
If all those fails wrong, just say, I'll look into it. There's nothing wrong with saying, I'll look into it.
No, I understand, but, well, if.
Don't take that pressure on yourself.
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
I gave up on that a long time ago.
I'd like to know, that's all. So thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Alright. Old business. Finally, we can talk about this old business.
Right.
So we all got an exit survey that Tanya and I were working on. It's designed to be quantifiable, I guess, is what we were shooting for with, you know, one to five ratings for some things, but also to have the opportunity to elaborate a little bit. There's some tweaking that might need to be done to this, this is kind of what we're looking at, so we just wanted to get you guys' thoughts on what, what we're looking at here. If you're kind of good with this format, it'll be an electronic survey, take four or five minutes to complete unless you wanted to write a book.
So, Mr. McCormick, I apologize, I did say I would ask her to send this to you earlier and I forgot, so that's on me, but.
No big deal. That's why I made copies for everybody tonight.
So does anyone have any comments on it, or anything they would like to add to it, or? I'd say that one thing, the second page, where it says overall satisfaction of the district administration, maybe breaking out those different areas would be better, it is superintendent's office is a little different from food service, as far as, you know, how you lump that all into the same. So you're saying the quality of the Friday pizza shouldn't reflect on Mr. McCormick? Certainly.
Did you still bake Friday pizza?
I think that's, that's a good point, so we can break that out a little bit. It takes two minutes. It's a little different between chicken nuggets and, you know, administrative services. Anything else we know?
So I will just say, on Tanya's behalf, I think she's open to all the feedback.
Yeah.
So now that you've had a chance, and I know Matt, this is your last meeting, but you still remember until you voted, until the vote happens, if you have some feedback.
No, I mean, I'm actually excited to see this, because I think this was one of the first things they talked about when it first came on a couple years ago, so.
I believe it is a shared document too.
It is.
You can go in and edit it.
Yes.
If you wanna mess around with it, John, it's like pretty, pretty user-friendly.
Sure.
Took me about a minute to figure out how to do it, and I'm not that computer savvy, so.
And I sent her an email with just what my thoughts were, and kind of, you know, like the, tell me the last grade your kid was in was mine, but I said like K through 12, and she just broke it out like that, so. So I just think that's important for us to understand where the person's coming from, right? If you've only had your kid here for kindergarten, first grade, that's a different story than if you let your kid come all the way through the sixth grade and then decide to move out or whatever, so. But, so I think she's open to any kind of feedback you can give her, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, I like a lot of these questions. I think the bigger part of this definitely has to be, and should be, is outlining how we're going to use it, you know, and I think, I know that's probably a part of the process is, you know, when is it sent, who is it sent to, how is it sent to them, and then what do we do with the data, you know, I think.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think the details in here are great, and I think knowing these things can definitely help us.
That's why we tried to put enough quantum, like numerically based things on there.
Yep.
So you can get a quick read on the average, you know, oh, this one gets an average of four, so it's like an Amazon review, so. I'd say by the next meeting, we should have the final version of it done, it's just this is you guys' chance to take a look at it and provide feedback on it. We'll tweak it as needed over the next couple of weeks.
And I'd like to say to the townspeople, if you are one of those parents who has a statement that you're moving out of the district, we really do want this feedback, we've been talking about it for years. So I know there's no mechanism by which we can compel you to do that, but we would love you to give us this feedback. It's confidential, I mean, obviously, we're gonna know by grade, you know, whatever, if you chose to fill that out, I think we should make that, we can make that not a required field, but it certainly would help us. But whatever feedback you can give us will only help us to make the district out. So I encourage you very strongly, if you're one of those parents who needs to, or feels that they need to take your student to another district or another educational facility, please take a moment, when given the opportunity, to fill this out, it will help us as a town, as a community. That's it, that's my two cents.
Alright. So we'll revisit this, hopefully for the last time. Do we have any new policy stuff? I think we're gonna have some at some point, but I don't think we have any pressing policy tonight. Any new business? Alright. We do need to go into a brief executive session.
So I make motion we go into executive session to discuss legal laws or words?
Pending legal action.
Pending legal action, or legal action.
Yeah, it's not pending anymore.
Right. So I make a motion we go into executive session to discuss legal action, to return into open session solely for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Roll call vote. So, John? Yes. Matt Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim, yes. Tanya's not here.
I'm ready to leave for this executive session.
Yeah, we probably should.
So we should actually, I'm sorry. So I make a motion we include, as part of the executive session, I apologize.
Second, that motion.
Still welcome. Okay, roll call vote. John, you agree with that? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.